Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The Wayne Westland Board of Education is hereby called to order at 5:00 p.m. on December 21st. Our first item of business tonight is 214.24, which is the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you please stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, I have some thoughts that I want to share with you before we continue in this meeting. Please excuse my voice. Before we continue the meeting tonight, let me start by saying that we value public participation and want your voices to be heard. However, we need to balance the importance of public participation with other important objectives, including ensuring all community members a fair and reasonable opportunity to express their views. You can find what I am sharing with you tonight on pages two and three of the agenda. There will be 30 minutes of public participation at the beginning of our meeting on items that are on the agenda. Also, there will be a 30-minute time at the end of the meeting for non-agenda items. All speakers are asked to complete the Citizens Questions and Comments Form and submit it to the Board. When the form is complete, please place it in the red document holder on the stage. Do we have that tonight? Thank you. This is how the Board President or Presiding Officer will recognize audience members for public participation. Speakers will be asked to identify themselves. Their comments should be absolutely no longer than three minutes per individual. Delegations who wish to express their views are encouraged to select one speaker to present the delegation's views to the Board. Again, the comments are limited to three minutes. A person -- now, we have been, I think, the last several meetings, I think we have taken time to prove that we want to hear what you have to say, even some speakers coming to this podium two and three times. So, starting tonight, we want you to understand we're asking you to speak one time, and a person may not delegate minutes to the speaker that is at the podium. I know I'm going to be on Facebook tonight. It's all right. Go ahead and start now. Speakers shall direct their comments to the Board and not to district staff or other audience members. Now, I will say this to you, and I'm trying to be kind, and I'm trying to actually try to get through a meeting and conduct the meeting. What I will not allow as Board President is for there to be made denigrating remarks toward our superintendent by calling his name or any Board member. If you do so, you will be gavelled down. If you wish to speak concerning the superintendent, call him by his office, the superintendent. Speakers should not expect Board members to answer questions during public participation. Speakers are expected to express themselves responsibly, courteously, and with due respect for the fact that their views and opinions may not be shared by all present. Speakers may not express complaints against Board trustees or district staff unrelated to their jobs or offices. The Board's President is charged with the responsibility for ensuring that public participation is conducted according to applicable law and policy. I have also been asked by a Board member tonight just to share with you, because there was quite a stirring at the last meeting concerning Board retreats. We are not flying to Cancun. We are meeting within the district borders. There are no hotel rooms. As a matter of fact, when we do these Board retreats, we're held hostage for about eight hours. So, it's not necessarily a fun thing, and I wanted you to know and understand that. Also, I want to say that this Board are not employees of this district. We are not paid a salary by this district. We are giving of our time. We do get a stipend for our time, but I just wanted -- the idea was put out there last week that we're all employed by the district. That is not true. All right. With that, we will move to item 215.24.
Excuse me, Presiding Officer. I would like to make a motion.
Please allow me to call the roll. Before we do that. 215.24, roll call and attendance. Ms. Hines.
Mr. Gray.
Here.
Ms. Abney Mitchell.
Present.
Dr. Weaver.
Here.
Ms. Hines, present. Ms. May.
Present.
Mr. Neal.
Present.
Mr. Cox.
Present.
Seven zero. Let the record show we have a book on.
The Chair will now hear the motion.
Well, just for clarification, at the last meeting, I put a motion on the floor for President Cox not to -- I put a motion on the floor for President Cox not to be the Presiding President for the Board, not to be the present representative person to represent the Board. And when I said it, with the applause and everything, I got kind of stirred up, and I said "for this meeting." And I was making a motion for him not to be President and the Representative for the Board for the remainder of his presiding time as Board Member.
So, you're not going to offer a motion. You just wanted to clarify.
Well, that's the motion, to clarify it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
The motion is to remove him as Board President.
That has already been done.
Okay, but in our language, we have "for this meeting." That's what I was trying to clarify.
All right.
I support her motion.
The question on the table, since it was said that President Cox should not serve as the President for the remainder of that meeting, what we are -- the motion is now, as I understand it, that he shall not serve until the vote on January 22nd? You're also going to have to make a motion who you would like to serve as President.
Can I clarify her motion?
Yes.
So, it's not until the next -- until we -- until -- unless he will not serve as President throughout the 2024 -- 2023 year?
Right.
In January, when we have an organizational meeting, if he is nominated, then we will go accordingly. But that's a nomination, not saying that in January he will become President. So, I just wanted to clarify.
Yes, that -- some things are understood.
But that's not what you said, so that's why I wanted it to be clear.
We had to put it in writing the correct way.
Okay. Secretaries, can you read that motion back to me, please?
Okay. Can you repeat the motion, Ms. Lavanna?
The motion is for President Cox not to serve as President for the rest of the 2023 school year.
That has been moved and has a second?
That's not right. Not to use.
See, I keep adding -- every time I repeat it, I add another word. So, the motion is for President Cox not to serve as Board President for the rest of this 2023.
This officer term.
Right, this term, yes.
Specify the term you're talking about.
Well, the term is in January, in December. In January, we select new officers. We have organizational meetings.
Thank you. That's what I understood you to say. So, now you have the motion?
Support.
I am going to call the Secretary to call the roll on this issue.
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
No.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Cox?
No.
Let the record show the motion carries.
Mr. Neal's recognized.
I nominate Melody Hines for President for the Board.
Very well.
Support.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any comment?
So, I'm not clear. Is this where we do a second nomination, or do we do the vote here?
Just vote right now.
We're going to vote right now, straight up or down vote.
Okay.
All right. Been moved and seconded. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Gray?
No.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
No.
Dr. Weaver?
No.
Ms. Hines, no. Ms. May?
No.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
And Cox, David Cox?
Yes.
Motion fails. Five to.
Would you now like to elect me for the rest of the 23 school year and into January 22nd? I mean, we're getting a little bit crazy at this point.
I think we're trying to follow the bylaws, Mr. --
Okay.
Absolutely.
So, now that Mr. Cox has been removed, the motion has failed for Melody Hines, do I hear a motion for the position of President?
I would like to make a motion to Bradley --
Does it have a second?
Support.
All right. It's been moved and seconded for Mr. Gray to serve throughout the end of the year.
Comment?
Comment, yes.
I know it's going to fall on deaf ears, but one of the reasons I nominated Melody is because not only has she been a strong Board Member for many, many years, probably attended every training class there is for Board Members, has been completely involved in every aspect of Board governance, and anything that we need to know. On the other hand, Mr. Gray is new. I know he just got sworn in as a practicing attorney, but as far as we know, he's not a certified Board Member. He may have taken some classes, but I'm not aware of it. He certainly has no experience on the Board, other than what he may have read in our bylaws. He may win a popularity contest for this particular position, but he's not really the right person to take us forward. That's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other comment? Very well. The issue is who is going to serve as our Board President. Ms. Hines, call the roll. Bradley Gray is the name.
So, for clarification, we are going to have Brad Gray to be the next Board President? Is that clarification?
That's what I understand, yes.
Okay. Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
David Cox?
No.
Ms. Hines, yes. Mr. Neal?
No.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Weaver?
No.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman? Oh, excuse me, Mr. President. Forgive me. I'd like to offer a motion and resolution to be read concerning compensation. This is going to be especially important in lieu of why everyone is here and what we're involved in, and I have it prepared. If you don't mind, after I read this, we'll pass it down so everyone can read it. Whereas the Board of Education of Wayne Westland Community Schools Board of Trustees shares responsibility for the current financial situation, and whereas, if not resolved in a timely manner, this condition may lead to the State Treasurer declaring that the potential for fiscal distress exists in Wayne Westland Community School District. And whereas on August 29th, 2022, the Board of Education increased their compensation from the previous $3,210 to the current $5,911, and in the process voted themselves an 84.14% increase in compensation. And whereas the various employee groups may be asked to improve the financial situation through layoffs and/or other cost-saving measures, let it be resolved that, per the Board of Education bylaws and policies of the Wayne Westland Community Schools Board of Trustees, shall be paid an annual stipend for their service to the Board of Education, and this amount shall decrease from the current rate of $5,911 to the previous $3,210 to begin on January 1st, 2024. The decrease in compensation shall remain in effect until the Chief Financial Officer, CFO, of the district can certify that the budget reserve is at or above 15%, which is the same number we put in the union contracts for their additional monies they get, but now they're not going to get it. So, we should rise to that same number. Of the total general fund revenues, if they so choose, post said certification, after that certification, the Board of Trustees may restore compensation language contained in the August 29, 2022. So, if we finally get to that 15%, we can restore the language that we're moving. In addition to the yearly stipend, Board of Trustees will receive $30 monthly stipend for mileage, which is what we currently get. The stipend payment, including mileage, will be paid in installments over four quarters on the Fourth Friday of the month in September, March, and June. The payment for December will be made on the Second Friday of December due to the break for winter recess, as it currently reads. There should be no compensation adjustment to reflect the average consumer's price index until the above-mentioned certification by the CFO and subsequent vote by the Board of Trustees to reinstate language found in the August 29, 2022 compensation resolution. An annual stipend of $250 shall be provided to each Board Trustee who attains Level One of the Michigan Association of School Boards Certification Program, which will be paid on the Fourth Friday in June. And I'll distribute copies if you would like to read that. Support.
I support as well.
And I'd like to comment on it, if I could.
Sure.
Out of fairness, I mean, we've listened to you. You talk about who's at fault. Now, I keep saying this. We know the name of the person that really started the whole thing, but there is a shared blame here. We realize that. We realize that we're supposed to know everything that's in the budget, even though we don't. But it's impossible, I think, for the Board to ask any employees, anybody that works for the school, anybody that attends this school, to suffer in any way, and while we still keep the same number that we gave ourselves a couple of years ago. Now, I'm not saying it was wrong to do it when we did it. 84.14% is a lot of money, right? But that was because it hadn't been changed in 1990, and there was rationale behind it. Nevertheless, now's the time to look at it. Now's the time to say, well, wait a minute, you know, it wasn't very long ago, we asked everybody that worked here to take a pay cut, and they did, and they suffered for years, and we finally got it back with some more. That's great, but now our face is something again. Now, when I do this, please don't think that I'm saying anybody else should have a cut in pay, because they shouldn't. They should not. Not the superintendent, not the employees. Well, I'll have to tell you, the contract says you can't unless everybody else does. So, do you really want that? We cut his pay, we got to cut your pay. So, yeah, here you go. Blame, yeah. My point here is that -- my point here is that there is shared responsibility, and I think that that's what we ought to do, is take that responsibility and show that we care, and work hard to get the reserve back up to where it belongs, and that's what this resolution is about.
Do we have any further comment?
I have a comment. Just like the Board supported this resolution to take a cut for 15% into the reserve, gets back up to where it's at, the Superintendent and his administrative staff also received a increase, and I propose that they take that same 15% cut as a Board President.
Do we have any other comment?
I support that motion.
Absolutely.
It's all in fairness. What's about leadership leading the way?
What motion are you supporting?
Lavanna's last motion about --
That's out of order. You cannot offer a motion while a motion is being considered.
Right. We haven't voted on the first motion that was offered first.
Okay.
Do we have any other comments on Mr. Neal's motion? Nope. Okay. Secretary, take the roll.
Okay. So, for clarification, can we please repeat the motion?
The motion is to return to decrease the current rate of the stipend for the Board Members from $5,911 to $3,210, beginning on January 1st, 2024, in effect until the CFO of the district can certify that the budget reserve is at or above 15% of the total general fund revenues. If they choose so, post said certification, the Board Trustees may restore the compensation language contained in the August 29, 2022. Am I missing any changes, Mr. Neal?
Yeah, three, four, five, and six. Additional yearly stipends still is going to be $30 a month?
But that's not a change. That's --
Okay. Payment times are the same. Okay, there's no compensation. Yeah, number five is a change? No adjustment for consumer price index?
Oh, five, yeah. Okay, there'll be no compensation adjustment to reflect the average consumer price index until above the mentioned certification by the CFO and the subsequent vote by the Board of Trustees to reinstate the language found in the August 29, 2022 compensation resolution. So, it's generally one, two, and five. Our book of motions has a change.
Okay. So, we have Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
And Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
President Gray?
Yes.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Now, do we have any further motions?
Yes, I would like to make a motion with the shared responsibility in good faith offering to our community, our staff, and our students that the Superintendent and his cabinet also take a 15% pay cut until we get back up to our standards where we were before the bonuses and the cuts came out, and also that there be no bonuses paid out.
Point of order. Mr. President, even you know, or you should know, that we cannot offend contracts, and so --
We can amend the contracts. That's why I thought of amend.
Where's the floor? Not in the meeting.
A contract can be amended.
I'm sorry. I'm speaking now.
Congratulations, contracts.
So, I'm going to leave that up to you as the Chairman, but this is -- this is not, as far as I'm concerned, doing the right thing. Thank you.
Well, just as I have said over the last couple of months in the Superintendent office to the Superintendent that you know, I suggested in an email that a pay cut be taken by the Superintendent as good faith to our students, our community, our staff. Yes, everybody worked hard. Everybody deserved to have an increase, but the increase is not there no more. So, I wonder how it's going to get paid out, because it's getting paid out. The pay raise is getting paid out biweekly. Every time that payday come around, we are paying that raise, and we don't have it.
So, I would like to remind the members to wait until you are recognized to speak.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Nope, nope. It's fine. So, we had a motion. Did we have a second?
Mr. President, just as a reminder, this is not the form for contract negotiations. We cannot negotiate a contract. You can pass a, what do you want to call it? A guidance motion, if you wish, that you would like for the President or the Superintendent to think about this, but you cannot change his contract at a Board meeting. That's inappropriate.
You were quick to shy the President about Robert Gould, but it shows you don't know what you're talking about with Robert Gould.
Who's controlling the meeting?
Mr. Cox, I also ask if you wait to be recognized before making comments.
I asked. I said, "Mr. President." They looked at me. No, no, that was for Mr. Cox.
You just negotiated a contract for --
Ms. Abney Mitchell.
May I suggest that we go into closed session to negotiate this?
You got a second?
Support.
You can't. I'm telling you, it's illegal, Mr. President.
Going into the closed session or to do this?
No, if this -- or if you want to just talk about it, but you're not going to negotiate. She said to negotiate.
No.
You're not going to negotiate his contract in closed session.
Right.
If you don't want to talk in front of the people about what you're thinking, that's one thing, but you're not going to renegotiate.
I said what I tried to say in front of the people, but --
All right. Again, I'm going to ask the members to wait until you are recognized to speak. Okay. Mr. Neal?
Thank you, Mr. President, and I apologize. I will tone it down a little bit, but there is an order to how we do business, and to sit here without warning, and the Board suggests that we can somehow renegotiate contracts that were deliberated on over a long period of time with a lot of thought and effort going into it, to think that somehow, right now, we're going to run in the back room and start renegotiating is not only inappropriate, but it's a violation to the Open Meetings Act, if you will. These are the kinds of things that the people out here should know. If we're talking about decreases, increases, changes, you know, other than something that's allowed -- allowed to be talked about in the back room, we should not be doing this kind of stuff. This is wrong, to last-minute negotiations. Why don't we just go in the back room and negotiate the MEA contract? I don't think you'd like that, would you? That's my point here. If anybody on this Board can just jump up and say, "Hey, let's go in the back room here and renegotiate contracts," then what about all the normal bargaining process that we use for every contract we have? It's totally thrown out the window. There's a lot that goes into this. Not only that, but anybody, you all think you're gonna try and get rid of the superintendent. I think you're wrong, but let's say you're right. Who's gonna walk in here under this condition, where they know the Board is renegade, that we can do anything we want anytime? Hey, you think you got a job, let's go in the back room, renegotiate. Anyhow, that's my point.
Ms. May?
So, this is, I guess, going to be a motion, but what I would like to see is for us to, um, contact the attorney, contact our attorney, and begin to have conversations around what we can and what we cannot do at this point. So, that's my motion.
We still had, we still had Ms. Abney Mitchell's motion. Did you wish to withdraw your motion, Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Mr. President?
Yes, I would withdraw my motion.
Wait, do we have a second to Ms. May's motion for us to consult with our legal...
I would support, I would support Ms. May's motion.
Okay. Do we have any discussion?
Discussion?
Sure.
I would like to say, in all fairness, what happened with transportation was a tragedy. I didn't like the way that was done, or the RFPs being put out without Board approval, and again, when we're talking about contracts, it seemed like they were trying to circumvent the contracts by doing that move. In all fairness, this resolution, I was not aware this was coming out tonight, but in all fairness, I would take a pay cut to be fair with the district. If we're in financial hardship, we have to work together to bring our budget to a complete, uh, where it needs to be, and then we all have to share the responsibility. Like, in the past, you guys have worked hard. I remember when you guys passed those contracts, you guys went years and years with no contracts as steady pay.
Ms. Hines, discussion has to be limited to the motion on the floor. The motion on the floor is to go into closed session to consult with our legal counsel.
Yes, I would like to consult with our legal counsel.
Roll call vote?
Does anybody else have any comment? Please repeat it. The motion is to go into closed session to consult with our legal counsel.
Not, not tonight, though, but for us to have the opportunity...
Oh, that wasn't, I'm sorry, that wasn't clear.
That's not what I said. I said for us to consult with our legal counsel to find out what we can and we cannot do in regards to the superintendent's contract.
So, your motion is to...
To consult our legal counsel, which would then take us into closed session once we have the contact with our legal counsel. We'll have a meeting set up, but it's so that we can find out what we can and what we cannot do.
So, your motion is to schedule a future meeting in closed session to consult with our legal counsel?
The motion, yes, yes, there you go.
Okay.
Mr. President, I'm all in favor of doing that. So long as this isn't being run down the track so fast that we have to do it tomorrow, the next day, or during Christmas, I mean, it, well, you're talking, we're not talking about layoffs, we're talking about reduction in pay. You can reduce pay anytime and get right, if that's what you gotta do, if that's right. But what I'm saying is, there's a lot of people here that, I mean, me, for one, I'm planning on being on vacation. I don't wanna find out that I can't participate. Is it that important that we do this before Christmas? Can't we do this after the holidays?
(inaudible) your employees.
Yeah, right.
I ask the room to refrain from yelling out from the audience while we discuss this. Anybody else have any comment regarding that?
No, I think that's a fair request, but I think that it's a matter of us, we're not gonna slow it down, so we'll move accordingly. We'll reach out, contact the attorney, see what the attorney says, we'll work together to set a date, so it's not that we're rushing, the whole idea is to find out what we can and what we cannot do, so that we do not make moves that, in the end, cost us more money.
But you're not plan, I'm sorry, Mr. President, that's fair. So, we're not talking about setting another meeting, you're talking about gathering the information so that at the next meeting, we can discuss it.
I wouldn't necessarily say the next meeting, 'cause it will have to be a closed session first, because we're talking about a contract. We're talking about an individual and their contract with the attorney, so we need to first contact the attorney and find out when he can meet.
Right, so, so your motion is at a time that's agreeable with the Board and...
Yes.
...our counsel to hold a closed session where we can discuss these...
And, and with whoever else is involved, right? Like, maybe even our superintendent, whenever...
If that's what our attorney is...
Should be mutually agreed upon, right?
If that's what the attorney says, yes, but it's all based on what the attorney says. Like, at this point, I feel like we need to take direction from counsel. We can talk about what I think I know, what you think you know, but that's not, we're not attorneys, so we need to consult our counsel.
Any other comment? So, the motion is for the Board to, at an agreed-upon time with the Board and our counsel, to schedule a closed session so that we can get answers to these legal question that we have.
Yes.
Okay? Everybody clear on that? Okay, roll call.
Hines, yes? Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes? President Gray?
Yes.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Excuse me, you did not call my name.
Oh, I'm sorry. Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Okay, for some reason, none of them is... Seven zero, motion carries.
Okay. No other motions, then we're going to move to, uh, item 216.24, Citizens' Comments Agenda Items. This is the section where we will discuss things that are on the agenda tonight. Uh, can you give your name?
Yes, my name is Heather Martinez, I'm a retired special education administrator from Wayne Westland Schools. I think it's important for all of you to understand what our school's social workers do in our buildings before you vote on layoffs tonight. I was in charge of the department for several years. While Michigan defines caseloads for certain staff members in MARS, unfortunately, there are no written guidelines for social workers. That is in part due to the fact that they're often used for a variety of different tasks in our schools. It's more about workload than caseload. The first duty our social workers have is to provide direct services to our special education students that have social work written into their IEPs. To do that for 93 students is absolutely impossible. That involves doing all the evaluations for these students, any other students that come up, the functional behavior assessments and behavior plans for students who are not in special education but need that level of assistance as well. School social workers see students directly, as well as consulting with teachers and families on a daily basis. They work on goals as created in IEPs, they track data related to those goals by keeping daily service logs. They create plans and lessons, just like teachers, for their individual students and groups. They input information for Medicaid billing. If any student in their building have parapros, they're in charge of putting together, tracking all the data, holding meetings for these applications. Above and beyond all that, they are part of their building's crisis team. If you ever step foot in a building, you would be able to see that our children are in crisis every single day. There are teams in each building that have been trained in how to respond, but it is generally the social worker that leads these teams. A crisis situation can include anything from elopements, fights, threats, throwing things, et cetera. When a crisis occurs, there's often paperwork like risk assessments, suicide assessments, MDRs that need to be filed as a result. Guess who does that? It's your social workers. Then you have our gen ed students who are struggling because of family concerns, lack of money, death, trauma, emotional, physical, and sexual abuse, substance abuse issues, homelessness, hunger, stress, abandonment, social concerns, making CPS referrals, and now handling all the things that our Family Resource Center won't be able to do if you cut them as well. Our social workers run lunch groups, greet kids at doors and in the hallways, help kids on and off buses, fill in when parapros are absent, et cetera. They work with families to find resources, they oversee the PBIS programs in the buildings, they do everything and anything all day long. The needs of our students in Wayne Westland are extensive. That is why I fought so hard and so long to increase the number of social workers that we have in this district. We cannot educate our children if we do not first meet their basic needs. It is our social workers that do that on a daily basis, and they help organize everyone else to do so. By eliminating our social workers, you're taking away significant opportunities for our children to receive those basic needs. Furthermore, on top of everything else going on, I find it to be extremely alarming that today, some of our building's general fund accounts were either zeroed out or reduced without prior discussion with our building administration. Field trip accounts that were made zero, over $7,000, all of a sudden, missing, that's taking away the rights of our students. You're stealing money from the kids at this point without discussing with our building administrators. It has to stop. I know my time is up, I'll find somebody else to discuss the rest. Thank you.
Thank you. Please give your name for the record.
Tanya Karpinski, Michigan Education Association. I'm here tonight to follow up on the MEA vote of no confidence I presented on Monday and the relationship that it has to the agenda items we once again find ourselves here tonight with. On Monday, I shared a condensed version of a timeline of events. Tonight, I'd like to speak in more detail to two of the events. First, I'd like to start with the November 20th Board Meeting. Wherein, as closing comments, at the end of the Board Meeting, President Cox made a statement that he wanted to get RFPs to privatize the Transportation Department before new legislation went into law in February. And no less than two days from that Board Meeting, an RFP of more than 70 pages went out to privatize transportation. I have a very hard time believing this hadn't already been pre-planned and pre-arranged, since in less than a day and a half from President Cox making his statement, RFPs were sent out. I would also like you to know that the RFP had to have been copied and pasted, because if you look at Appendix A12 of the RFP the district provided, it had anyone interested in bidding, certifying a bid to Lincoln Consolidated Schools, not Wayne Westland. Now, let's get back to the November 30th date, where myself and each of the MEA Union Presidents were called into meetings and were told of the number of layoffs that were to occur by Superintendent Dignan and Dr. Ophelia of HR. Once again, we were told these layoffs were part of a plan, the plan that had the district laying off 39 employees, a plan that has already been moved, as of just three nights ago, to 20 layoffs. In the meeting on layoffs, the superintendent and HR Director told each of our union groups that these decisions had been thoroughly and methodically reviewed, and these layoffs would be done with empathy. If this were true, why do the unions still have so many questions that continue to remain unanswered? Although the privatization did not remain on the agenda for Monday night's Board Meeting, and hopefully, the listed layoffs will not occur tonight, the item that does remain the same is the fear and the instability the leadership of Superintendent Dignan and Assistant Superintendent of HR are causing to numerous lives. The trust and confidence in this leadership is gone. Piecemeal actions that are happening without a thoroughly reviewed, methodical process and empathy have to stop. What is the big picture, the whole plan? How much of the $26 million in ESSER funding is being reallocated? When will it be reallocated? And what is the district's fund balance? And finally, what steps will the Board take to start putting the district back on track with new leadership that can be trusted, so that the staff, students, and community can actually return from the holiday break without the constant anxiety of waiting for the next Wayne Westland shoe to drop with this current leadership? Thank you.
Please state your name.
Hi, my name is Michelle Tackett. I am a, I am a 24-year veteran employee of Wayne Westland Schools, currently at Franklin Middle School. On Monday night, the Hicks Elementary staff addressed the Board with a plea for you to allow Angela Whately to remain as Assistant Principal at that elementary school. As a department head and employee of Franklin Middle School, where Angela would wind up, I am asking you to keep her at Hicks Elementary, where she does her best work with those children of the Inkster and Westland community. So, Angela, what she does not know is that she has a fabulous reputation even outside of this district. So, what I am asking instead is for Mrs. Julie Midich, who had retired from the district, came back with a three-year contract as a floating interim, as, um, principal administration, who is currently at Franklin Middle School, who is doing an amazing job with the staff and the students, who has built a rapport with us, um, and, by the way, both ladies I talked to, and they had, they gave me full permission to address this and use their name. The other thing that I ask is that, for the Board, when you are voting tonight, whether for layoffs or layoffs to occur or not occur, I am asking you to vote no. If there are no layoffs that are happening at Central Office and with positions, that as a 24-year teacher, I have no idea sometimes who does what at Central Office, I am asking you to vote no to the layoffs for those people who are in the trenches, specifically those who are working with mental health, the social workers, because once we come back from break, not only the counselor from Adams is going to be one to 620-plus students, but at Franklin, we are gonna be in the same situation, and right now, I know that Melanie Harner and Angela, or Angel Epps are crucial to our staff and our students and our families in keeping them in place. So, I am asking, I am imploring you to vote no to layoffs for those who work with the kids and the families each day.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board Members and Superintendent.
If you could say your name for the record.
Caitlin Miller.
Thank you.
I am an alumnus of the Wayne Westland Community School District. I started at Switzer Elementary, I went to Adams Middle School with Mr. Alder, whom everyone loves, and I graduated from Wayne Memorial High School. Now, I'm an employee and a taxpayer of this district. I'm very disheartened to hear and see what has happened to us. We've had so much unexpected happen to us in the last year that is also unexplained. I don't think it is a lot to ask of you and the administration to hold off on the layoffs at this time, especially when what we are asking for are answers and transparency. While I know that it will likely be said that it is not in the budget, many here would agree that what we need and deserve, first and foremost, is a complete forensic audit from someone other than Plant Moran. This is something that can be released to the staff, the parents, and the taxpayers of this district to give us answers as to what has happened, especially since it is so catastrophic. Our district is high needs, you should all know that. Our district is one that has such a high population of needs that we had universal breakfast and lunch before the state instituted it for every district in this state. The potential loss of two important people in the Family Resource Centers could also harm our students who need what services they provide just beyond emotional care. We, as a district, cannot afford to lose such pivotal people, not just staff, who, that way, they aren't overwhelmed, but so our students don't feel just like a number. If our loss of instrumental services overload our social workers, educators, and other support staff, we absolutely will lose students. This is something we cannot afford. You said we are just above the state threshold for a takeover. Laying people off will put us at that threshold, because we will lose our student population, because they are not getting the services they need and deserve from each and every one of us. Considering what we all want and deserve, answers for how this started should be the first step, not layoffs. We need to know how things will, we all know things will happen and changes will need to be made, but don't skip over that first step of telling us what happened, every line of this is where it went wrong. Start there and make sure it doesn't happen again, so we don't lose the necessary support that each and every one of our kids deserve. That's it.
Thank you.
Hello, Edward Pruitt here, many know me as Pastor Edward Pruitt as well.
Many know me as Pastor Edward Pruitt as well. I stand before you for multiple reasons according to the agenda. First of all, congratulations to you, President Gray, for your decision to lead the Board. I'm concerned first with the resignations and layoffs. I'll circle back to that in a moment. I'm concerned with the agenda as a whole. There was a lot of dialogue and a lot of information given to what the community can and cannot do. After President Gray was appointed to this role, there was a lot of violations of what was placed in front of the community. We have community members that are expected to hold a standard, and we have a lot of disrespect from a section of the Board. There's a dynamic shift, and I believe that's going to change things for the direction so the people win. We have resignations on the table, and we'll have more resignations without this shift. There are other school districts looking to pilfer our teachers. There are parents looking to remove their students, and that's because of a failure of leadership. We have to place the onus where it is deserved. Was it an accident? Doesn't matter. The onus goes somewhere. We have to have enough courage and confidence to be able to accept the responsibility, and then maybe the community can accept that. In order for us to move forward, we have to build trust, and if there's no trust amongst Board members, because we saw that tonight, how can the community trust the Board? How can the community trust the superintendent? We have to have a level of transparency, a level of accountability, and a level of equality in exercising decorum. If you can't do it, this might be the time for you to say, "My term's over." Because if indeed you can't do it, I believe the people have gathered enough together to begin recall processes, and I will support every one of them. Let's do the right thing for the community, and it's going to start clearly with having a plan that, like she said, is not piecemealed. You've caused a lot of your own problems because you put one thing out, and then another thing out, and another thing. Have a bigger plan and exercise upon that, and maybe the community can get behind you. Right now, you don't have them.
Hi, my name is Brianna Roop, and I am currently the only social worker at Adams Middle School. Our school is made up of 614 students as of today, which include two post-high programs, two ACT-18 ASD programs, one cross-categorical program, and one of the district's three Family Resource Centers. At the beginning of the year, our department was given our allocations per school, in which Adams was allocated two full-time social workers. Our caseload numbers and overall need has only increased since then. Due to the district financial issues, our other social worker decided to leave in fear of being laid off, and there has been no plan to replace her. This has made my caseload go from 42 to 93, all which I am required to do without pay. Since starting in Wayne Westland four years ago, our district has made a huge push towards mental health. However, choices like this reflect the opposite. As a social worker, Data's my best friend, so I just wanted to share three statistics that I found in 2023 that represent the age range of the students that we serve. One in six youth aged 6 to 17 experience a mental health disorder each year. 50% of all lifetime mental illness begins by the age of 14, and suicide is the second leading cause of death among people aged 10 to 14. Last week alone, one day, I completed five suicide ideation assessments, and today I went back-to-back with four different students in complete distress. The research shows that we need to be proactive. However, given the current circumstances, we're forced to be reactive with servicing our students' mental health and social emotional needs. Social workers are trained mental health professionals. I chose this career because I'm dedicated to doing what is best for students. If I don't have time to meet with students in need because I'm engulfed in paperwork of the 93 others, where does that put our students' mental health needs? Then, the reduced services then end up impacting our staff's wellbeing. A push from the district, every Friday, we get an email sent out that encourages us to relax and rejuvenate, which is great, which is great. However, I don't feel like that is really checking in on our teachers because if you did, you would really see the distress that they're in. Oh my gosh, I'm sorry, I'm not a public speaker, but I really have to do this because it's my job to advocate for not only students, but my other social workers as well.
Good evening, my name is Jennifer Owens. I am a Wayne Memorial alumnus. I'm going to speak on accountability here, just as I touched on on Monday. Of the financial team that was responsible for this copy-and-paste mishap regarding our budgets and getting us in this mess, can someone please tell me if they are still employed?
This is a citizen's comment. This isn't a time for the Board to answer questions.
Okay. Well, from what I've gathered, my information along with other people, two of them are at least still employed. One of them is now in Flint. I find that extremely disturbing that those two people that were held responsible or had their hands in it anyway are still employed, and that needs to be looked at immediately. Also, since we can't ask questions, which is fine, but another question to stir about is what is the Board doing regarding our superintendent's involvement by signing off on these without having any knowledge of what he was signing? Also, another thing to ponder for the Board, has there been any investigation thus far into how monetarily damaging the additional positions that have been created by our superintendent is to our district? If this has not been investigated by our Board yet, it needs to be done so immediately. And I will end with, the community, I'm sure can agree with me, votes absolutely no to any layoffs until a full investigation, a forensic report, a presentation outlining all phases, including all of the numbers that show cost savings to make up for the full shortfall, is presented to the community. Thank you very much.
Good evening. I'm Todd Pauling, former president, former employee, retired now two years. And as I stated the other night, when will the administration sit down and work collaboratively with the union to figure out what happened? The reason why I say that is because even though I'm retired, I'm still quite involved because I care about the district very much. It's like everybody here is like a big family. I still find it hard to believe a whole department with multiple checks and balances didn't catch a multimillion-dollar mistake. I'm so confused on how we were doing so well, and now we're in big trouble. No one still said in administration that they would be willing to take pay cuts, sell Marshall, or sell back those transit vans, that you were told multiple times, "We have a Transportation Department that does that work." Doesn't sound like you're being physically responsible. Your first response was to privatize. Now, layoff can eliminate positions. Eliminate positions that we'll never get back. This has happened before, and we never got those positions back. Sounds like we're being set up to fail. So you can have an excuse to privatize us. Adding work in the current proposed layoff structure would make our buildings, which are our pride and joy, look terrible. Like I said Monday, laying off and eliminating jobs is not fair to the employees who live and work here. It's not their fault. Funds were mismanaged.
Good evening. I'm Councilwoman Melissa Sampey from the City of Westland, and I am here. Thank you. I am here. I was here Monday, and what I said to you is I said, "The district is falling apart." I said it three times, and I had numerous people that reached out to me and said, "Thank you for saying that." Because really, at this point right now, the fix is on your shoulders. Okay? We have to make tough decisions, but what I'm asking you tonight is to not proceed with the layoffs at all. And I'm looking you guys in the eyes because I have to tell you, the decisions that were made do not fall on their shoulders. They are the backbone, the backbone of this district. They are the ones that wipe the tears. They are the ones that deal with the problems. We have to do a full review of all spending in the district before we make decisions. We cannot have a knee-jerk reaction. We can't just make decisions because we need to find cost savings. Superintendent Dignan used my comment and his comments and said, "We need to knock on doors." And I'm telling you what, guys, we need to knock on doors and understand what they're doing before we make cuts. We have to look at every single position and make sure that we're validating to make sure it is important in our district. Now, I don't know every single position. I don't know every single position in the district, but we have to do a full review. And these individuals that are in this room, they're not the ones that deserve the cuts. They're the ones that are working. They're the ones that are taking care of our students. We have to look at the right cuts, and by cutting the individuals in this room, that is the wrong decision. So what I'm asking you, as a representative for everybody in the City of Westland, please make the right decision and vote down layoffs, and thank you.
Michelle Sample, community member, former employee. In the dictionary, punishment states to inflict penalty or sanction on someone as retribution for an offense, especially a transgression of a legal or moral code. So hearing this, I ask, who should have a punishment? The actual people that are involved in it or the innocent? The Board has one employee. You have the right to hand down a punishment to that employee as said to his job. The superintendent has the job to oversee all of his departments. He has the right to step up and hand down punishments to the staff members or departments who was at fault with the missing of the funds, not the innocent. The staff here and the employees here and everybody that supports the district are not at fault. But instead of having everyone accountable, excuse me, instead of not holding everyone accountable, you're just handing out punishments and deciding to do layoffs. I am against this. Does this seem right? No. Losing staff is never the answer. Every time the district writes sizes, you immediately go to laying off staff. On Monday night, it was mentioned that the payroll is the most expensive. We understand that. That's the most expensive expenditures. Cost-cutting is rough, but what is the main goal of our school district? To teach the students, keep them safe here and happy and healthy. This is for emotional beings. These students and the staff in this district are not the ones that should be having to put this penalty on them. When my students were here, excuse me, when my children were in this district, the teachers, the secretaries, the social workers, parapros custodians, lunch staff, bus drivers, bus helpers, and everyone in between, my own four children considered them their family. That is what the district is. We are a family. We come together. We are connected. And all this for the emotional support as well as feeling safe and secure is the utmost responsibility of every employee that is here. Again, as a community member, I expect more out of this Board to do your job and to put the students first, stop the layoffs, do not vote for them. And my last question is, I thought of this, through all this fiscal accounting that is going to be going on with the audit, how much is that going to be costing us? Thank you very much.
Good evening. I would first like to apologize to the Board.
First, tell your name.
Oh, sorry. I am Jonathan Turner.
Thank you.
I graduated from John Glenn High School in the year 2022. I'd first like to apologize to the Board for speaking out of turn. This is my first time coming to an event like this, and there are things to learn, and I appreciate the corrections. I am here tonight to ask you guys to please vote no to staff layoffs. I would like to share my experience as a student who went through a hardship during high school, who suffered death in his family, suffered depression, thought about killing himself. It is because of the social workers, teachers, staff, parapro, you name it, in our district the reason why I walked the stage and got my diploma after thinking I was a failure. There were nights that I fathomed going to class and contemplating ending it all. These social workers and these teachers are the people who helped me get the help I needed. I am very concerned about you taking that away from other students. We should not have to wait till a student takes their life or something bad happens in this district and then say, "Where did we go wrong? How come that student couldn't get the help they needed?" So as I said, I'd really appreciate if you guys would reconsider that because I am standing here today because of all the staff in our district, the bus drivers that said hello, good afternoon, asked how I was doing, the social workers that took the time to hear my story and tell me everything was going to be okay. I am a proud graduate of John Glenn High School, and all these employees deserve to keep their jobs, and the future students of these parents, teachers, everyone in this district deserve mental health, access to mental health. It is a known fact that teenagers have the highest suicide rate. On the back of our lanyards, it was mandated by the government to have the 1-800 Suicide Hotline number on it. Please do not take this access away from students. We can save people's lives and keep people walking across the stage with their diploma in hand, feeling like they accomplished something. Taking away all those services is just a tragedy waiting to happen. Thank you.
All right. We have time for one more. We will have more comments at the end, but this will be our last comment before we move on with the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Lori Morella Smith. I am a prosecutor at the Wayne County Prosecutor's Office. Nothing to do with this here. I am a lifelong resident of Wayne Westland Community Schools. I graduated from John Glenn a long time ago, 35 years to be exact, back when it was still the powerhouse sporting thing that I think you're trying to go for again. Great, that's a good thing, but don't forget the community behind it. That is the most important job there is. My family has lived in this community since before Westland was a city. We have been here with the first graduating class from John Glenn. So I come to you not as somebody who has a student in this game anymore. My children have graduated, but because I'm a community member who knows how very important everything that we do relies on this. What you're doing to the school, what you're doing to these people is wrong, just wrong. When you find a cut like this, when you find an error like this, you hold the highest people responsible, not the support staff. I've seen many superintendents come and go over the years. You do what's best for the community. If anyone in my world, and before I was an attorney, and I was in the high-end engineering finance, if anyone in my world had come up with that kind of deficit, it would mean immediate termination for complete failure to do your job. I've been a member of this community for a long time. My sons went to Head Start. I was on the Head Start Policy Council. I was their chairperson. We kept that staff there for hours going over that budget before we would approve it. I would expect... I would expect the very same for you guys, the very same, and especially for the superintendent when it's your job. I've heard several times tonight that you guys can now answer questions. Well, then let's put together something that you can, put together a program where you can answer our questions because we have them. We want to know. And put together parent groups to look at that budget if you don't have the time. I'm certain you will find people that are willing to volunteer. I will myself. This school and their support staff saved my son's life, helped him with issues I didn't know he was having because he didn't want to talk to me. They saved his life. You cannot get rid of the people, the life-saving support staff that will save people's lives. We've been in many tough spots in this district over time. It's, and the community came together. I think it should do it so again. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is 217.24, and it's the consent agenda.
Point of order.
Yes.
Mr. President, the consent agenda was not adopted nor was it declined at the last meeting. It was tabled. So we have to have a motion to bring the consent agenda off the table.
I do not believe that's true. I believe that item C was removed from the consent agenda first, and then that was tabled. Mr. Cox, you were presiding at that point.
It's my impression that the entire consent agenda was tabled. I may be wrong.
No, I.
It was tabled. It needs to be brought back.
That was, that was brought off.
Because I was the one that made the motion to table, but I made it when we were discussing it as an agenda item later.
It's my impression that that was removed so it could be considered separately, and then, and the consent agenda just never received a.
It never received a second, a second to the motion. So I don't believe it was tabled. We just never received a second to the motion.
I concur with the president. We got the consent calendar last time. It might have been Mr. Cox that gave the, offered the motion, and there was no second. No one would second it, which wasn't a good idea. But nevertheless, it was true that the, that one item layoffs was then.
That was tabled.
Pulled out, or maybe prior to that, pulled out and held it separately and then eventually tabled.
Right.
So.
So to consider it.
This is okay, just the way it is.
Right, that's, that's what I believe.
But when you get to the other one, it has to happen. The document isn't, I mean, a motion.
Right. Of course. All right. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Support.
Do we have any discussion? Okay, Ms. May?
No, you said Ms. Hines.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Hines, roll call.
Dr. Weaver? Mr. Cox? Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. Seven zero, motion carries.
All right, the next item on the agenda is 218.24, Review and Approval of Human Resource Items. It says that Dr. Weaver will be speaking to this.
Thank you, President. At this time, I would like to make a recommendation to our board for the layoffs of the employees listed in the board packet. All information regarding layoffs has already been shared with Dr. Dignan and members of the Board of Education for consideration.
This we need, this was what was tabled, so this is what needs to, then. So do we have a motion to bring it off the table, then?
I make the motion to bring this off the table.
Do we have a second?
Support.
All right, do we have any discussion? Okay, with no discussion, Ms. Hines, roll call.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. May? Let me go back. I'm sorry. We're voting yes or no on these layoffs, correct?
No.
No, we're just taking off the, off the table first.
Taking off the table, I'm sorry. I'm like, I don't know what's happening right now.
No, no, it's fine.
Um, yes. Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. President Gray?
Yes.
Motion carries, seven zero.
And do we have a motion for item 218.24, Review and Approval of Human Resource Items, Layoffs, Administrative, Non-Instructional, Non-Affiliated Personnel?
Yes, I make a motion first to vote on this, yes.
Do we have a second?
What was the motion?
She made a motion to vote on this. Do we have a second? To vote on the actual agenda item. We worked it from the table.
Well, is she voting yes or no?
Well, she's making the motion. Do we have a second for the motion?
Is there a motion to approve?
Yeah, we don't have a motion to approve?
Just called the number and called the roll. That would be appropriate.
Well, we still have to have discussion if anybody wants discussion.
Yes, of course.
Does anybody want to have any discussion on this, then, before a motion? So we don't have a motion to approve?
So for clarity, just clarity. We need some, we need some clarity on this one. So the motion.
Just recognizing.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I'm just trying to get clarity so we make sure we know what we're voting for. Okay, so the clarity is, okay, we took it off the table and we're voting on this, correct?
We're waiting on a motion to approve.
A motion to vote, okay. So we just need a second. Anybody seconding the, to vote?
Yes.
Didn't I make the motion to vote?
We don't have a second.
We didn't have a second.
Right, I was like, I made the motion to vote before I had the second.
I'll second. I'll second.
Okay, now, do we have any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, I'm not sure, but I think the motion needs to be either to approve the layoffs or not to approve. Not to vote, we're not going to vote yes or no. We have to vote on whether we're approving the layoffs. I think the appropriate motion is not to, if you don't want to approve it.
Right. Ms. May, I believe that's correct, that we, so we have to have a motion to approve or a motion to deny.
Approve it or not approve it.
Or not approve.
I'm making a motion to deny the layoff.
There we go.
Support.
Okay. Now, do we have any discussion?
I would like to give a discussion.
Ms. Hines.
Yes, so I would like to give a discussion on this. We don't have any of the information. We're not clear of the fund balance. We're not clear, we don't have a plan, there's no vision, and I do not feel comfortable laying people off until we have some type of plan in place. It's the holidays. A lot of people are suffering from emotional factors, people have lost family members. It's the worst time in the world to ever let go of social workers in this time. Even when it comes to people's pay, if they're out of work, there's no checks coming in. People have rent coming up. Nobody had any chance to even prepare for this type of thing. And there's no even guarantee if you can get unemployment. So this is something you cannot take lightly. These are people's lives at jeopardy, and I'm super concerned about my students. I love that statement that young man made. That was beautiful. I mean, I understand what it's like to have a child that goes through, you know, emotional difficulties. And we have to have people to support our staff. The Family Resource Center, we're in the recession. How do you get rid of people from the Family Resource Center? That's just unacceptable. So I think that we deserve to take the time that we need to sit down, let's talk to the attorneys and have a straight plan before we do any layoffs.
Do we have any further comment?
Just one.
Ms. Neal?
And because this motion was made in the negative, I believe, that is to not support, if you vote yes, you're voting not to do layoffs.
You're voting yes to deny. So, I know, it's a little confusing there, but yes, the motion is to deny, so you're saying yes to deny it if you vote in the affirmative. Is everybody clear on this?
That's it, yeah.
Okay. Everybody's clear on this, that voting yes is voting yes to deny, to, to not approve. You're voting yes to not approve. Okay, no other comment? Okay, no other comment, roll call.
Okay, Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
President Gray?
Yes.
Motion carries, seven zero.
All right, the next item is 219.24, and that's the nomination for a Michigan Association of School Boards. And that is, so the Michigan Association of School Boards is a statewide association that our school board belongs to. They provide educational resources, they, they keep us updated on things going on at the state level, and it's also good for networking with other board members to see what they're doing in their district. That association also has its own board that is able to run that organization. In a previous life, I worked for the Michigan Association of Secondary School Principals, and I know that these associations' board members actually get a lot more knowledge than the general membership, and they bring back a lot of that knowledge from Lansing to their membership of the MASB board. And to have a member of our school board serving on that board would be a great boon for our community. So do we have a motion?
So moved.
Nope.
Not yet. I guess I have a question before we have a motion. How did this come to us? How do we have this nominee?
Mr. Weaver, this. How does this end up on the agenda?
I don't, I, I can't.
Kimberly May asked for it to be put on the agenda.
Okay.
So we have the option to offer, well.
I mean, if somebody else wants to be nominated, yes, because it then goes to an election at MASB, but they have to be nominated by the board, so if somebody would like to offer another alternative nomination, yes.
I would like to be nominated as the second representation of the Michigan Association of School Boards.
Well, the first nomination request was Kimberly May.
I'm sorry, I believe Luana Abney Mitchell sent an email to April with the nomination.
Okay.
But I'm asking her to speak for herself.
It was Luana sent an email to.
Yes, I did contact April and asked her to put a nomination in for Kimberly May for the school board, the Michigan Association of School Boards nomination.
I believe we should be able to offer a nominee.
Right.
Yeah, so that this is just on here because she offered.
Normally what we do here rather than have it awarded to us in.
No, this is just a vote to offer the nominee. This is just for the nomination.
Right.
Yeah, so if you want to offer another nominee, yes, this was just on here because it was.
I would like to second Melanie Hines.
Thank you.
But first, the, well, but the first one on the table was Kimberly May.
I got you.
So do we have a second for Kimberly May?
Support.
Okay. So first we'll vote on Kimberly May.
Is there a discussion?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, discussion.
I'd like to.
Yes, Mr. Cox.
I know I don't have any friends in this room, but I still have this job. And I'm not going to be able to support Kimberly May for this tonight, and I want to tell you why. I made it very clear since Ms. May got on the board that I thought that we were very fortunate indeed to have somebody with her experience. For those that don't know, she probably has the closest relationship with school budgets of anybody up here because she actually works in this field for the Plymouth Canton School District. So when Ms. May came on the board, at the time, we had a CFO whose name was Shonda Cleves. And Shonda had done a great job with answering all of the questions and problems that our auditor had had with some of the way that the systems were working in the office. And when an auditor looks at the books and they're not happy with a particular thing, they make a note of it. And a note of it is not a good thing. You, you want a note to be removed from your financial report, just as ours is right now. It's clean of any notes. I must confess, I depended a great deal on the fact that Kimberly knew, she wasn't somebody who had to be schooled on the importance of what she was doing. She already knew. It was a great, great find for us. I felt the same way about John Albrecht when he joined the board because he had so much experience in the administration, and I knew they couldn't help but be of benefit to members of the board. What happened was, Ms. May developed a very close relationship, working relationship, with Ms. Cleves, even asking me one time if I would support her for, for an award based upon her, her, the job she was doing for us. And I, I wasn't able to do that because that was something that the administration has to do, not the Board of Education. We're in a, kind of in a separate group. When this, when this whole thing came to light, when I first got the very first phone call about the budgeting issues, I called every single member of the Board of Education right then. Within an hour, I had called everybody and I talked to everybody except for Kimberly May, who I never talked to. She never called me back. She didn't show up at the June meeting. She wasn't at the July meeting. She wasn't at the August meeting, and she never called. So 25% of last year, she wasn't even at the meeting. And I don't know if that's going to be, if, if life issues occur while she's with Michigan Association of School Boards, but as President Gray said, it's an important role. It's an important role for us. It would be great to have one of our people on that board. We'd be on the inside. But no hard feelings, it's just, I, it still lingers. You're, you're not at all concerned about it, though. You want to know who's, someone said the financial team. That's right. That's right. The board is the one that signs the budget.
Okay, Mr. Cox, let's keep this a discussion of the motion, not back and forth with the audience.
That's all I have, thank you.
Okay, do we have any other discussion?
I'm not dignified in either, so don't make it.
All right, we have a motion and a second. If there's no other discussion, Ms. Hines, the roll call.
Ms. Hines, yes. Ms. May?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
No.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
No.
Mr. Cox?
No.
See, President Gray?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Before we move forward with the second motion, I just need to clarify, are we allowed to nominate two people for this?
There's usually two people.
There is usually two, okay. Just wanted to make sure. Okay, do we have, and now we need to make the motion. Do we have a motion for, Ms. Hines, I believe? Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Yes. We have support. Do we have any discussion on this?
I'd like to do a discussion. I've been on the school board for over nine years. Ms. May is very active, so is Luana, with the Michigan Association of School Boards. We go to the conferences, we learn. She even did a presentation on grants and finances. So this lady is impeccable when it comes to her character. It's a very amazing, not, not very amazing, but the Michigan Association of School Boards have these training classes that really helps us to become better board members. So it's very important to have good representation. So I do vouch for Ms. May. She's an amazing person. She does attend all the conferences.
Any other discussion?
I also, I would say, I also have a comment, you know, even just like trustee DeDacasse said, that Ms. May is very aware of finances, that's what she do for a living. At one of the conferences in Lansing, she actually did.
I do want to remind that the discussion does have to be limited to the motion, and the motion was for Ms. Hines.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
Well, we was giving her a couple, we missed out on you, but you good, you good.
Do we have any other mo, discussion around the nomination of Ms. Hines? Okay. With no other discussion, we'll take the roll call.
We have, Ms. May? We doing the vote for representation?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
President Gray?
Yes.
Record carries, seven zero.
All right, and the next item on the agenda is 220.24, and this is Citizens Comments again for non-agenda items. This is the time when anybody can get up and talk about any non-agenda items. They were all heading the other direction.
Laura DiMarco, paraprofessional from Schweitzer Elementary. Tonight, I have a different message for some on this stage than for others. To those of you who are truly allies of students, staff, and community, thank you. We see your support, and that gives us hope. From you, I ask that you continue to push for coherent narratives and clear reasoning. But beyond that, let us in. Tell us the things happening behind the scenes. Break free from the curse of secrecy and confusion. Tell us what or even who is standing in your way, that the administration is playing games with you, that you're suspicious and angry too. You, you support us, let us support you. To those of you who have been on the board this whole time, I understand that you had every reason to trust the information you were given, but the buck stops here. From you, I ask that you set aside your pride and your desire to disassociate from the people who are causing problems. And I ask you to say, being in this position means that I take responsibility for this failure of leadership. I apologize for the part I have played, and I swear to you that I will fight for this community. Show us that you're ready to regain our trust. To those of you who believe the outrage is only over finances, you are sorely mistaken. We stand here, staff shuffled around like pawns, students regarded as merely a talking point, a community betrayed by its leaders. From you, I ask that you take one minute to think about how it must feel to be in this crowd. We know that difficult decisions have, will have to be made, but while the administration is having their cake and eating it too, we're being told that we should be grateful for the benevolent gift of our scraps of bread. To the soon to, or no longer soon to be former, to the former president of the board, the anger directed at you in particular is not the inevitable outcome of a sad mistake. Your overt rudeness to the public and other board members alike, your refusal to cooperate with anyone but the administration, your complete denial of responsibility, these are just a few of the reasons a recall petition is in the works. This is why you have enemies, because you engendered them. And to our superintendent, I so badly want to give everyone the benefit of the doubt here. I really do. I know administration isn't easy, and the solution won't be simple, but with every word that comes out of your mouth, I find it increasingly hard to trust anything you have to say. You go behind the backs of our unions, tell blatant lies, and obfuscate the truth all out in the open. So how can I disregard accusations of nepotism or rumors that you're playing your own school board against each other? How can I not wonder if a criminal investigation is required to figure out what you are working so desperately to hide from the public, your staff, even the school board? How can I want you in charge? Lastly, I ask of all of you, reflect on your part in this mess. Reflect on whether you will be a part of the problem or the solution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Mari Phant, and I am a senior here at John Glenn. First off, I just want to say thank you to some of you who see us students. You do not have a right to lay off our teachers. You don't, because you don't know what goes on here for us students. You don't know what goes on in the classroom, in the classrooms with students. You don't see the relationships we build with our teachers and we carry year-long or semester-long. You do not see that. So you have no right to make a move to lay off these teachers. No right. These teachers come to school every day and work hard, not only for themselves, but for the atmosphere of John Glenn as a whole, for us students. They make relationships with us because they know some of us at home don't have nice relationships. We look up to our teachers. Some of our teachers look up to us. We learn things that we don't learn every day in life with these teachers. And I am one to say that these teachers, every single one of my teachers, all the way from kindergarten to senior year, they have made a huge impact on my life. I have teachers in the hallways, they're like, oh, they come to the board meetings or they see them, "Nice speech, Mari, that was really good." Teachers I didn't even know knew my name, telling me that. Let me tell you, that gives you the confidence right there to come up here and to speak. These teachers have a huge impact on the students, and we have a huge impact on the teachers. Thank you.
I, Bud Somerville, class of nineteen seventy-five, Westland, John Glenn. My kids went here. Last thirty years, I've been a photographer for football. I've been on the boosters. What is the difference between this board and that board where we have to vote on every dollar spent? We have to have a two-signing system where two people must sign to issue a check? What the hell is going on? That seventeen million dollars, if that's the right number, where'd it go? Who's responsible? Who's signing the checks? That's what I'd like to know. I love this school.
Thank you. All right, if we have no further comment, the next item on the agenda is two twenty-one point twenty-four, superintendents' report comments. Dr. Dignan?
Thanks, President Gray. Congratulations to Ms. May and Ms. Hines on your MASB nominations. I want to thank everybody for coming to this meeting. These meetings are called by the Board of Education. We needed this meeting today to approve the consent agenda because of pending resignation and retirements, as well as approval for some of our student field trips that are going to happen over winter recess. My warmest thoughts go out to everybody and their families, and best wishes for everyone during the holiday season. May you soar into the new year filled with health, happiness, and prosperity. And, and again, I, I hope everybody has a chance to kind of relax and recharge. And on that note, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is two twenty-two point twenty-four, review and recommendations, Board of Education. I will start with Ms. Abney Mitchell.
Yes. Good evening, everyone. I would just like to say happy holidays. Enjoy your holiday, enjoy your family, and just enjoy the peace and the joy. Happy New Year.
Mr. Neal?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I don't know how long it's really going to take for people to feel better about either what you know or where we're going. All you got to do is listen to everybody to hear that there are still people, even after we just voted not to do any layoffs, who are still asking not to do any layoffs. And still people that had the idea that somehow we're in a deficit. I know this is a little confusing, but we're not in a deficit. We have about six point two percent of our revert reserve fund, and our goal, as written, I'll read it to you, in the bylaws is, "The Board of Education recognizes that a good fiscal management comprises the foundational support of the entire school system. To make that support as effective as possible, the Board intends to maintain a fund balance between five percent and ten percent of the district's general fund operating expenses." Now, the problem we have is we're not violating our bylaws, we're not in a deficit. The problem we have is that suddenly, we don't have the number we thought we had. We all thought we were floating on a big chunk of money that doesn't exist. Why? Not because somebody spent it, not because, not because anybody did anything foul or illegal, it's because the number didn't get moved. It didn't get moved from revenues to expenditures. When the state gave us millions of dollars to put into the retirement funds for the employees, it was supposed to be just passed through money. Money that came in, and money that went right back to the state. But instead, it got logged in and stayed there and got reported to us as money we have. All right, so what happened from that? Well, there's probably a couple of things we got that we probably might not have gotten if we were in this particular situation and knew it. There's a probably, uh, we certainly would not have negotiated contracts with the union that said, "No, wait a minute, no, wait, 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 listen to me," that promised a bonus of some kind at fifteen percent. If we didn't have fifteen percent, you know how, how lousy that would be of us to do that? No, not fifteen percent bonus. I said if we didn't have fifteen percent in our reserves. I understand the contract calls for some kind of extra money if they maintain fifteen percent or better in our reserves. Tell me if I'm wrong on that. Maybe I'm, but my point here is that that number doesn't exist. We wouldn't have negotiated that number. It would have been fair to the union and based it on some other number. Do you get what I'm saying? I'm not saying no bonuses, I'm just saying that wouldn't have been the magic number. That's not responsible. So the fact of the matter is, there is no money missing. We're trying to prevent the situation where we go from six point two percent down below five. Now, in previous meetings, I, based on ignorance, have been saying, "The last thing we want to do is go to five or below five," and have the state come running in. Well, I took the time to actually look up the law. It doesn't seem as bad as that. To me, what it looks like it says, and I'd rather have an attorney, maybe our president look at these words, but it looks to me like it says, if it looks like you're going to go below five percent, and that's projected to be the problem, or if you have gone below five percent, the one thing you can't do is deficit spend. So they want you to get in with the intermediate school district, or in our case, RISA, and form a contract where you collaborate and work on things to keep it in the right direction, to keep it from going below that. It doesn't look as horrible. I, I really quite honestly thought the state's going to come in and say, "That's it, you know, we're tearing up contracts." I don't think, I read that. I think it's milder than that. But it doesn't mean that we can avoid the, the process of trying to figure out how to stay at, above five percent. I mean, it's still going to be a magic number. Maybe it can be done in many different ways, I don't know. We'll look to study that. But I don't feel as though we're threatened as much as it seemed like when we first started talking about it. So that's just me. That's my comment. Thank you.
Ms. May?
Thank you, President Gray. Um, as I have shared before, like, I have a lot of thoughts. I like to process. I don't want to just speak from, just, I don't even want to say speak from my heart because I, I want to, I want, let me say this. First and foremost, I want to apologize to you all. I want to apologize for what has, what has taken place on this stage this evening. This has not been the most professional meeting, this has not been the most organized meeting, and I just want to apologize for that. When you're trying to make change, you have to go through some bumps, and you have some little waves, and you're just, you're just trying to work it all out. So I appreciate your patience with us as we continue to try to make change and to ensure that we are following our policies and our bylaws. The other piece that I'd like to say is, thank you, Mr. Neal, for sharing and lifting that in regards to the five percent. I believe I said on Monday that I think it would behoove us to have MDE or the ISD come in and talk to us about what would it look like if we were to fall below five percent. We, we've been making a lot of assumptions, which Mr. Neal has said. We have relied on administration to tell us what's going to happen if we were to fall below five percent, but it doesn't seem as though we factually know what could or could not happen. So again, my recommendation is that we bring someone in from MDE or the ISD to explain to us what could happen or what would happen if we were to fall below five percent. With that being said, I really would just like to wish everyone happy holidays. I hope that many of you have the opportunity to just breathe, because you've been holding on to a lot over the last few weeks, and I just want you to take some time, just breathe. Just let it go, enjoy your families, enjoy the moments. And with that being said, happy holidays to everyone.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say to my fellow board members that I'm very concerned about all of these motions that apparently are being discussed without the full board. I am concerned that we are headed toward litigation when we talk about contracts that is going to cost this district millions of dollars. That's, that's my comment for tonight. Thank you.
Ms. Hines?
Yes, I'd like to thank everyone for coming out, and as Ms. May said, we definitely would like you all to have a, a very good holiday with your family. We don't need stress and confusion and depression. It's already hard enough to deal with everyday society situations that we have. And again, I'm a little concerned myself because we didn't get the agenda until like one o'clock through an email.
Three o'clock.
Three o'clock? Sorry, yeah, in an email. And even with this, 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 we weren't even aware of this, but being full and transparent as a board member, I will take a decrease to save the district, whatever we need to do to be fair and equal, because this, didn't even notice this coming up. And again, I am concerned with Wayne Westland because I went to the school district, I love Wayne Westland, I am the biggest cheerleader of Wayne Westland, but recently, what's been happening with the board is embarrassing. I'm in the community, they're like, "Where's my seventeen million?" I work with a lot of other schools, they're laughing at us, we're the laughing stock. It's terrible. I am concerned about our students with the switch of the teachers, of these classrooms, and then with them, like, putting a person that does the credit recovery, laying them off, that doesn't make sense because there's a lot of confusion in the classroom. We're supposed to be putting our students first. And again, we were really big on mental health. We just got the, the facility over at John Glenn High School, the, the health facility. We were doing a lot with our family resources, and there's a lot of struggling families out there. The union just from seven, uh, nine hundred just came back from strike, the casinos. There's a lot of financial hardship out there, so we need to help our families, and that's what those programs are for. And I think if we are, as a district, cutting the people down at the bottom, they need to do some things at the top as well, in all fairness. If we don't have the money, we shouldn't be paying bonuses, just like the one meeting where they was taking forty-five thousand out of the general fund for some program. No, if you don't have the money, you shouldn't be spending that unless it's like for grants, like, you know, that's just, doesn't make sense. And I also want to look into ways to generate revenue. We have the planetarium, again, we're talking about trying to see if you can sell Marshall. We have the one with the print shop. We have the, even the teacher of his career take that found money to generate funds. So we need to try to figure out outside ways to, you know, bring money to the district. But again, I love Wayne Westland with my soul, my soul. I mean, I always brag about the district and what we have to do, and I'm concerned about our programs. We did all this work to get the fire academy, the police academy, uh, what's going to happen with the training facility, what's going to happen with our career college readiness. I mean, I'm concerned about our future programs and how that's going to look, and I'm concerned about graduation. Our kids are struggling. They need help, and we need to make sure we have those supportive services in there. Even with the buildings, I always brag about how I love seeing my bus drivers all over Wayne Westland, that's marketing. I love walking to my school building, looking how clean and beautiful the buildings are. Floors, spick and span, the cleanest builds, even buses you'll ever see. So we definitely don't want to take away those things that makes Wayne Westland great. So thank you again for coming, and I'm just glad to say no, because as a board member, I don't feel comfortable voting on something without really looking at all the different aspects.
Mr. Cox?
Brad, I'd just like to say congratulations on becoming president. Your timing may not be that great, but congratulations. I'd like to, to echo what Mr. Neal said, and also bring back what the representative from the MEA said about the meeting on November twentieth. For those that remember, the meeting on November twentieth was before we had any idea where we truly were in terms of fund balance and money. Now we know that the number is seventeen million plus. It's, it's, it's terrible enough, but then I was being told it was thirty plus. And keep in mind, remember, this thing has been evolving since the moment we discovered it, all the way until the end of November when we found out precisely where we were. So it, it's so difficult to try to hit a moving target, especially a target that's that large. So ask yourself, if you were in the position where you had to come up with an answer for this, an answer that continued the projects that we have going, that continued offering the children what we're able to offer them, where would you go? What, what would you look at? It's, it's a rhetorical, it's a rhetorical question. It's a rhetorical question. You have to come up, you can't be emotional. You have to come up with a path forward. You have to come up with an answer. As Mr. Neal said, as Mr. Neal said, the, the way it reads, as I understand it, is just as he said. It's kind of open-ended, and I'll, and I'll tell you why I think it is open-ended, because we've actually been in this exact same... we've actually been in this exact same situation before. And, and I attended the meeting, the meetings that occurred between the state of Michigan and us to talk about, what we had to do is, we had to come up with a plan that would put us at proper fund balance at a particular time in the future. The state knew that we couldn't do it right then, or maybe next year, but we had to have a plan, and it had to look as though we were working the plan. The board was together on the plan. We were meeting the different, the different milestones in it. They were very easy to deal with, and we successfully got out of it. But, but they're still looking, and they're looking at what is the board doing? Is the board working their way out of this problem? So that's what they really want to see, and it's been my experience that, that they're easy to get along with as long as they know that we're working on the problem. I wanted to mention something else that's concerning. You know, every organization has policies and procedures that it follows in order to get work done, and the larger they are, the more those have to be adhered to, and certainly any educator in this district has to follow those rules in their own work world. Well, members of the board do too. And what, what we've seen tonight is somebody offered a motion, and when it wasn't understood, someone else said, well, let me tell you what she means. Well, how did that happen? How did the osmosis of that person knowing what the other person meant occur without a conversation happening? I received a text message. I received a text message from Dr. Weaver, and I think this was at 8:38 last night. Dear board members, I will be sending out a date tomorrow for the superintendent's evaluation. We will have the courtesy to vote, as we will, and dialogue, as you as members of the board see fit. Currently, there are four votes to remove the superintendent from his duties. Where did that come from? This is automatically, someone knew there were four votes? My point is, obviously, what's going on is the board has stepped away from its responsibility, and it's communicating out of this, out of the public, it's communicating out of the public eye. When, for instance, the other night when I was removed as president, one board member made a note to remove me, had the policy language right there, imagine that, and then, and by the way, the, whatever your feelings are about me, automatically five other votes appeared out of nowhere. What I'm saying here is that, what I am saying here is that we can get through this. I know we can. The reason I know it is because moving forward, we are properly funded. We have to work out of this, but we need to return to adhering to the policies for this president or any other president. You can't have seven different people sending three emails each to a superintendent and expect that superintendent, any superintendent, to get their work done. I said at the last meeting, we speak as one voice. That means that we decide, and that's the decision going forward, not each individual board member sending individual emails to the superintendent. That's not the way to get out of this. I'm very concerned about that. That's all I have. Thank you.
President Gray, may I say something, please?
This is...
I just need to say something.
That's out of order. We...
I'm sorry, but we do speak together as a board.
Ms. Abney Mitchell, that's his...
The problem with the president was he was speaking for everyone, and that's why he had to be that guy.
Ms. Abney Mitchell, it's out of order to make comments right now.
Tell the truth.
Okay. Well, I first wanted to thank the... Ms. Abney Mitchell, it's my time. I first wanted to thank the support that I received from the board. I know that many up here did not agree with the decision, but I do trust, I do trust that they will support the decision, as the board is supposed to. We are now at the end of December now, and we have not moved any further really down the line than we were two months ago, as far as what the plan is going forward, and that is because of a lot of the confusion that has happened over the past few meetings. So it's time for that to stop. It's time for us to take a moment, slow down, regroup, come up with a plan, and move forward with that plan for the district. And the board, as Mr. Cox said, we do need to get together on a plan, like he said that they have in the past. The situation here was that we had plans that the board was not together on, so what we do now is we find a plan with the administration that the board can get together on. I do agree that policies and bylaws have not been followed as they should in many of the meetings recently, and that does need to be a priority going into the new year. We need to get back to regular order in the meetings, so that we can accomplish what we need to accomplish to get us out of this situation. And finally, I do want to say that, I do want to clarify that while we did call for a motion and we did pass a motion, that we are going to meet with the, with our council in January. The board at that time, making their motion, has not made any accusations of wrongdoing, but we are in a situation that we do need to speak with our council to get a fuller picture of what things look like and what things may look like going forward. That is all I have to say on that. But I hope you do all have a happy holidays. I know this has been a contentious meeting, and so was Monday, but we can now put the layoffs behind us, we can enjoy our holidays. With that, I'll move on to 223, 224 adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Go to the second. All in favor, say aye.